January 12th. And the first order of business is election of officers for the chairman and the vice chair. So how do we do this?
I'd move Hal Hutchinson as chairman.
I'll second that.
All right, so I would accept the nomination if approved. All in favor of Hal Hutchinson for chair?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is election of vice chair. So I would nominate Jason Gutierrez.
Second.
Yep. All right, all in favor, and Jason, I assume you'd accept.
I would accept that.
All in favor of Jason signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Jason.
Congratulations, Chairman.
Thank you. All right, so now I guess we move ahead with the regularly scheduled meeting. I'd like to introduce the planning commission members and staff. Hal Hutchinson here. To my left is Commissioner Matt Mitchell. To my immediate right is Commissioner Jason Gutierrez, new member on the board but a longstanding staff member that's found his way on this side of the table, so welcome.
Thank you.
We also have a member, Bob Bailey, who is absent this evening. Out front is Planner Trish Davis. And to the right of Jason is Deputy County Attorney Charmaine Reed. So this commission is an advisory board for the Natroni County Commissioners. Our decisions are subject to approval, conditional approval, denial, or modification by the Board of County Commissioners. For each application on the agenda, we will hold an official hearing. The hearings are recorded, and there will be written minutes of this meeting. After this commission holds a public hearing, unless an application is tabled or withdrawn, the Board of County Commissioners will hold another public hearing for the application. Tonight, everyone will have an opportunity to address the commission. First, those in favor of the application may address the commission; then those opposed to the application may address the commission. Finally, the applicant may give a brief rebuttal. When the chair recognizes you, please come to the podium and clearly state your name and address before giving your comments. You should know this is not a forum for public outcry or speaking from the audience. You must be recognized by the chair before addressing the commission. If a person's conduct is out of order, the chair may give the person a warning. If the person continues the conduct, or if conduct is extremely out of order, the person may be directed to leave immediately.[258.01][258.01](APPLAUSE). All right, so the next order of business is consideration of the December 8, 2020 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
I would second that.
Motion and second. Being heard, any discussion? Okay, now for the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposed. The meeting minutes are approved as prepared. All right, next on the agenda is approval of the 2021 Planning Commission meeting schedule. Trish, I believe you handed those out, and you had a comment that this may be different from the packet?
Yes, the July 13th is actually parade day, so we are going to adjust that to July 14th, and that's a Wednesday.
Okay, that's the only change on that thing? All right, does that require approval?
Yes.
Okay, so Chair would entertain a motion to approve the 2021 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting schedule and submittal deadlines.
I would move to approve those.
Second.
Any discussion? Any more discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And no opposed. There we go. Okay, next on the agenda is consideration of PS 20-4, and that's a request to transfer a portion of plotted property between two neighbors and dedicate Glenn Drive to the public as a roadway. The transfer and dedication will be completed as Harnangle Major Subdivision. We have a staff report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So tonight, we're looking at Harnagle Major Subdivision, which is in the location of, excuse me, Robertson Road, west of Robertson Road and south of CY Avenue in the Westland Park subdivision. The subdivision consists of urban residential zoning with the west being urban ag. So as you can see here, the parcel that's highlighted, the purple ones, are just south of Highway 220. There we go. So this is looking from Glenn Drive towards the applicant's properties. On the left side, we have Iris Harnagle, and on the right, we have the Shumways. And there's a road that runs kind of at an angle to the right, and that is part of this subdivision, is granting that access to the adjacent neighbors from Iris Harnagle, so that the adjacent neighbors have access going forward. And this is just a split. On the left, you're facing north, and on the right, you're facing south. And again, you can see where the survey flag is, and just past that is the entrance to the west that goes as part of that access easement that's on that plat. And this better describes it. So the Shumway property's got the red roof on that left portion, and then Harnagle is on the bottom. And the access that's being dedicated comes off of Glenn and heads into Shumway, and it also goes north to the adjacent property. These have been used for years and years, but this plat will dedicate that as access and legal access for those property owners. The other portion of this subdivision is a small portion of Glenn Drive that's been used for years. It's part of the district, and it connects two subdivisions together, and it's never been dedicated. So as part of this subdivision, they would like to dedicate that to the public so it can be legally included within that road network. So the criteria for approval is the subdivision consistent with the development plan, and staff would say yes, it's part of Neighborhood 20, which is the Westland Park. The development plan recommends infilling with residential and maintaining infrastructure and coordinate with the City of Casper for future annexation. The proposed subdivision is developed and does comply with the development plan and the zoning resolution. The dedication of Glenn Drive will support the goal of maintaining infrastructure and making the subdivision compatible for future annexation. Is the subdivision in conformance with the general provisions and subdivision design standards? Yes, proposed finding of fact, the subdivision has been processed in accordance with the standards applicable within the general provisions and the subdivision design standards. Providing access to lots and appropriate dedication is the proper subdivision procedure. Has the applicant provided evidence that the sufficient water supply system and sewer disposal system will comply with state and local laws and regulations? Proposed finding of fact, both these lots currently have residences, and they've had residences for years and years, so the water and sewer study is not necessary as they already exist. Does the subdivision appear to be compatible with the surrounding area? Again, this is a subdivision that's completely developed. There's going to be no detriment. They're already part of the existing neighborhood, so the safety, welfare, and health of the inhabitants of the area will have no further detriment. Will an improvement in service district be required? Proposed finding of fact, access is provided through existing streets, and as part of the Westland Park Improvement Service District, no further action is needed. As of tonight's meeting, there have been no comments received, and notifications were sent to the adjacent property owners. Staff would propose that the Planning and Zoning Commission enter a motion and vote to recommend approval of this agenda item by the Board of County Commissioners and incorporate all findings of fact that are in your staff report and that have been presented tonight. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Trish. Any questions for staff? So at this time, I don't know if we go right into the public hearing, or do we ask the applicant to come up and address this first about what they're doing?
Go into the hearing, and the applicant can be the first to.
Okay. We had a situation last time where the applicant didn't, even though he was in the audience, he didn't stand up, so it was a little different. I'd like to call a public hearing for PS 20-4. So anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the, what is PS? What is that? PS 20-4, what does PS stand for?
It's just subdivision.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the subdivision changes we just Would you please come forward and give your name and address?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I'm Charlie Chapin from Williams Quarter Day in Neville, 159 North Walcott, Suite 400. I represent the Shumways and Mrs. Harnagle. And as further clarification why this piece of property is being donated, Shumways have been great neighbors, and these are contiguous properties over the years. Mrs. Harnagle, she is an elderly lady, and it's her desire to donate the parcel of property to Mr. and Mrs. Shumway, so they have a place to turn around before accessing the main thoroughfare. At this point, when the snow gets up, they need to back into it, which has not created a particularly good situation over the years. So on behalf of Mrs. Harnagle, she would request that this be allowed to be done so she can demonstrate her appreciation to the Shumways.
Any questions?
I have none.
So this situation, Charlie's been in the works for years, right? And this is just finally making everything official?
It has, yes.
Essentially what's going on here?
It has, and it started out, we thought, well, we'll just give her a parcel of ground. And once we started looking at the subdivision statutes and everything else, that didn't quite work that way. And Ms. Davis has been most helpful in guiding us through it, so that it's far simpler than it could have been. Plus, I think the county does pick up some public roadway, which there are some gaps in that, out in that area, and so I think that it's a good trade for everybody.
I did have a comment.
Yes, sir, Jason.
I'd like to add that historically, this would have been an internally managed matter, except for the dedication. The dedication of Glenn Drive there, that one piece of that, is really what's driving the applicant to come before Planning and Zoning and the Board of County Commissioners. It's that dedication of Glenn to the public that's driving this process. Otherwise, this would have been handled internally. So that's really why we're here today, is that the Glenn Road piece.
And I appreciate that clarification. As I say, it cleans up a problem with that dedication, and so it's a good deal for everybody.
Any other questions for Mr. Chapin? Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Second time, anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application? Third and last time, anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application? Okay, anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward. Second chance, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Third and last statement, anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition? Declare the public hearing closed. Gentlemen, any discussion? Okay, Chair would entertain a motion to approve, disapprove, or I guess table, the application?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve PS 20-4, including the staff's findings of fact and presented here in this public hearing.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of this application signify by saying aye.
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 None in favor? The application passes. All right, next on the agenda is the application PS 20-5, and that is a request to split an existing platted lot into two lots to be known as O'Quinn Major Subdivision Number Two. So staff report on this, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is an application by LFG Investments LLC, and the proposed subdivision is located in the area of North Robertson Road and Zero Road. The subject parcel and all surrounding parcels are light industrial. So as you can see, we're out here west of Yellowstone Highway. If you take Zero Road and head west, you can come down JC Road, and it's right there on the corner of JC and Cameron. This is standing out on Cameron Road, looking north on JC. The subject parcel is to your left. And this is just a quarter turn to the left, looking towards Robertson Road, down Cameron Road, and the subject parcel's on your right. This is looking south across the street and down JC Road. So we're going to go over those criteria again that we just heard last time. Is the subdivision consistent with the development plan? This subdivision is located in Neighborhood 14, which is our West Belt Loop and Robertson Road portion of the 2016 development plan. The development plan recommends industrial development with residential closer to Mills. That closer to Mills is more in the area of USA Trucking and back by the water tank on that side. The proposed finding of fact, the proposed subdivision is partially developed and does comply with the development plan and the zoning resolution. The subdivision will provide for additional industrial development. Is the subdivision in conformance with the general provisions and subdivision design standards? The subdivision has been processed in accordance with the applicable general provisions and subdivision design standards. There is appropriate utility easements and access to both of these lots. Has the applicant provided evidence that a sufficient water supply system and sewer disposal system will comply with state and local laws and regulations? Part of this lot, I think it's the north half, is already developed and has a septic system and water supplied by the Town of Mills. The southern portion that's vacant at this moment will have water provided by the Town of Mills, and the applicant has been working with WLC and the Health Department for the septic location and replacement areas, so they are currently complying with state and local laws. Does the subdivision appear to be compatible with the surrounding area and not detrimental to the future development of the area and not detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare? Proposed finding of fact, there will be no detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the inhabitants of the area and the county. The lots will be used as a typical industrial lot and same as the adjacent neighbors out there. Again, this is all industrial development. Looks like there's a lot of manufacturing and storage. As of tonight's meeting, there have been no comments received, and notifications were sent to adjacent property owners. Staff would propose that the Planning Commission enter a motion and vote to approve this agenda item, including the findings of fact that were in the staff report and this public meeting to the Board of County Commissioners. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions for staff on the application? It would appear, Trish, that an entity approached the original owner and just says, I want this for a storage lot type thing. Are there plans for a building or anything? You mentioned the water and sewer. It looks like it's just a storage lot to me.
It is, and the requirement for the septic system is part of the subdivision regulations. At this moment, and as far as I understand, the next few years, they don't plan to build anything. It's just going to be used for storage. But as the subdivision regulations require, you have to meet the requirements of the Health Department, so that's why they're working with them for the septic system.
Thank you. All right, so we'll move into the public hearing. I open the public hearing for application PS 20-5, and that is for the lot split known as the O'Quinn Major Subdivision Number Two. So all those in favor of, any of those in the audience in favor of the application, please come forward, give your name and address, please. Is the applicant here? Anyone from the applicant? All right, second time, anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of O'Quinn Major Subdivision Number Two? Third time, anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of O'Quinn Subdivision Number Two? Please come forward. All right, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to O'Quinn Major Subdivision Number Two? Please come forward. Second time, anyone wishing to speak in favor of? Please come forward. And the third time, anyone wishing to speak in? I said favor before, I should have said opposition. Third time, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please come forward. Close the public hearing on PS 20-5. Commission, any comments?
I just had one question as to, did they say why they want to split it into two? I didn't really understand the rationale for that. I was going to ask them if they were here, but since there aren't, I was wondering if they...
To answer that question, I am not 100% sure. I think that it's to lease a portion of it, but that's just an estimate.
So maybe to sublease it to someone else? Was that the plan?
I would guess.
Jason, you have one?
Yes, I'd like to add that historically, if I could think back in the past three years, we've done this a number of times in through this neighborhood. It's worked out very well. There's been several of these properties that, Energy 307 was the majority of it, but with the Town of Mills providing water, the soil types were agreeable to septic systems, and they were able to successfully develop these splits without any known opposition. So I guess now that I've spoken, maybe I got a little bit of a question. Roden Bridge saw this application, and is there any of those where they're looking at accesses on those roads?
No, no, there's no accesses that are being applied for at this moment.
And are those, does Roden Bridge manage accesses on those at that location?
They're not county maintained roads, if that's what you're asking. No.
And I did see an existing access for both properties. There's a gate on the Casper Building Systems side, the smaller lot.
Okay, Chair would, if there's no more discussion, Chair would entertain a motion to approve, disapprove, or table this application?
I'll motion to recommend approval of the requested major subdivision, PS 20-5, by the Board of County Commissioners, incorporate by reference all findings of fact set forth herein, and make them a part thereof.
I would second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I would just add that it's always nice to have the applicant here for something like this, to add their two cents, but moving on. So now for the, calling the question. All in favor of the motion to approve PS 20-5, the O'Quinn Major Subdivision Number Two, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And no opposed? Application passes. All right, the next item on the agenda is a variance request, VC 20-4, and the variance is to grant a lot size variance, so the applicant can exchange a small portion of land with an adjacent neighbor to provide for safer access. So, Trish, now for your staff report, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So this application is by Dustin Roberts. The subject parcel is located at the base of Casper Mountain on Garden Creek Road. The entire area is owned Mountain Residential One. This is a picture looking down one of the access roads, and to the right where the arrow is, you can see the driveway that we're discussing. And this was just after a light snow here about six or eight weeks ago. This is an additional parking area that's just on the north side. The, looking at this, you can see to the right is where this parking area picture is taken right there. This is a little bit closer view of that hill with the snow on it. Sorry about the picture being not that great. And this is just another angle of that same driveway. So a little bit of background on this area, in 2004, the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan was adopted, and it created the Mountain Residential One and Mountain Residential Two zoning districts. The Mountain Residential One has a 10-acre minimum. The applicant has a two-acre parcel that is considered a nonconforming parcel in the Mountain Residential One District. The applicant's driveway slope is very steep and creates both physical danger and inaccessibility during winter months, while the summer impedes emergency vehicles. The applicant's neighbor to the east is amenable to swapping a small portion of land, so the direction and slope of the driveway can be altered to a safer location. So this is a map that was part of the application, and you can see where Parcel A is purple, and that's the parcel that they're going to exchange. and that's the parcel that they're going to exchange. And you can see the roof on Mr. Bummer's property, the red one, and to the west of that is some more purple, and those are the two parcels they're looking at swapping. The criteria for a variance: When acting upon a variance, the Board shall be guided by the intent and purpose, as well as the goals and policies of the zoning resolution. In addition, the Board shall require showings concerning all seven of the following. And in your packet is the full responses by the applicant. Are there exceptional or extraordinary circumstances and conditions applicable to the property involved and literal application of the resolution to the applicant's property that will result in unnecessary hardship? The applicant's response or partial response: The minimum lot size was chosen to maintain a sense of solitude per the 2004 Casper Mountain Land Use Plan. In this instance, the parcel size is already grandfathered, and the proposal does not significantly, if at all, change the lot size. Staff's finding of fact: The properties along Garden Creek at the base of Casper Mountain do face problematic circumstances and conditions that are particular to this specific area. The adoption of the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan increased the minimum lot size to 10 acres. That change left over 200 parcels as non-conforming lots. Additionally, these lots face topographical challenges for building and road construction. Is the hardship due to unique circumstances? Many of the neighbors are over the minimum lot size and don't have this unnecessary restriction and/or do not have such restrictive access with unsafe sloping of the driveways. Staff's proposed finding of fact: While there are parcels above the minimum lot size, a majority of these lots are not. It would not classify as a unique circumstance in this area, but compared to the county as a whole, it would. So I was talking about the 200 parcels, and this is -- I went through and calculated the lot sizes just within this vicinity of the applicant's map or the applicant's parcel, excuse me. You can see his right there in the middle. The 200 extend from the east to the west, and that's just in the small section. So I just wanted to point out that there are a majority of these lots that are below the minimum lot size, and the lots start at .0014 acres. Will the variance authorize a use other than those uses specifically listed as permitted or conditional in the zoning district in which the variance is sought? Proposed finding of fact: No. The variance is for the minimum lot size, not the use. No other uses would be permitted as part of this variance. Will the variance result in a gain of use, service, or other income to a greater extent than that available to other landowners in the vicinity? No, the applicant just wants to move the driveway so he doesn't fall in the winter. Proposed finding of fact: There will be no gain in service or income for the applicant. The applicant would gain the ability to acquire a small portion of land to construct a safe driveway to his residence. Will granting the variance merely serve as a convenience for the applicant, or is it necessary to alleviate a proven hardship? The applicant's response: As a physician -- excuse me, as a physician, it is my professional opinion that injuries are a hardship and that avoiding injuries is not a mere convenience. As a homeowner who is already creating a defensible space per the county's recommendation, I would like fire crews to have better access to defend my home. Staff's proposed finding of fact: The applicant is currently below the minimum lot size and considered non-conforming. Granting the variance will only allow the applicant to make a minor change to his boundary to accommodate a safer access to his home and allow for better access by emergency Will granting the variance impair the use of adjacent property or alter the character of the neighborhood? Staff's finding of fact: Granting the variance will not impair the use of adjacent property or alter the character of the neighborhood. The location of the proposed driveway is not visible from Garden Creek Road. The applicant and Mr. Bummer will be the only two that are affected by this change. Will granting the variance detrimentally affect the public health, safety, and welfare or nullify the intent and purpose of the development plan or the zoning resolution? Proposed finding of fact: Granting the variance would not detrimentally impact the public, health, safety, or welfare. The intent of the zoning resolution is to keep the Mountain Residential One District as a low-density residential area. The applicant will start with two acres and one residence, and he will end with two acres and one residence. With an approved variance, the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan and zoning resolution are not So there were some additional findings that were in your packet, and so for the PowerPoint, I just -- I picked one to add in here, but there are more in your packet that was provided. Secondary access: To the extent possible, properties shall have an alternate access road, fire, trailer, two-track, in addition to their primary access road or driveway. This proposal would result in increased access for fire and emergency vehicles. The current eastern driveway is too steep for any sizable vehicle to climb. There is only one functional access to the property. This would actually provide an alternate access required. A decreased slope would allow vehicles closer to more effectively battle any fire. To date, there has been no comments received on this agenda item, and notifications were sent to adjoining neighbors. Proposed motion: Staff recommends a motion and vote by the Planning Commission to recommend approval of this agenda item and reference the findings of fact in the staff report and the public hearing. And I'll answer any questions.
Any questions for Trish?
I just have one question. When does a land swap have to be -- have to go before the county commissioners? Does like all land swaps have to go, or is it just has to do with the fact that it's less than 10 acres?
So the land swap in this instance is going to be unplanted land, so they're both section township range land, and state statute actually allows an exemption if you deed from one property to another and then they absorb it or merge them together. So in this instance, it would just be a deed. So if it was platted, it would be different, and we would go through the subdivision process to actually vacate the old lots and plat them as new lots. Does that answer your question?
The comment was made on the previous one that had it not involved Glen Road, then it wouldn't have had to go before the -- if I understood that correctly. So they were kind of swapping land, but if they hadn't included Glen Road, then it wouldn't have had to go before the county commissioners. But this one looks like the same as a land swap, but yet it's kind of going before the Board. So I was just curious as to how you determine that.
Yeah, so the Harnigle subdivision was two platted lots, and so when you have a platted lot, if you -- in the application, if you just replat, if you start with two lots and you're ending with two lots, we do that internally. And this one wouldn't even come to us just because it's unplatted land, so we're not vacating anything. It would just be able to have a deed and combined.
So we are affected because it's part of the mountain plan? That's the reason they have to come?
Yes. Yes.
Jason, any questions?
I don't have any questions. I do have a comment, Mr. Chairman. I did work on this project when I was on the other side of the table, so I will be abstaining from comments or voting on this one.
I don't think we'll do it this time, but I remember I made a comment like that one time that I was asked, and I was like, "Okay, bye." And I had to leave the chambers.
Was it financially related?
No, I just said I was going to abstain, and the chairman said, "Goodbye. We'll call you when we're finished with the item."
If this one, Jason, doesn't say anything, you can say.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments for staff? We'll proceed with the public hearing. Thank you, Trish. We'll call a public hearing for consideration of various requests, VC 20-4, and that's for the exchange of property on off of Garden Creek Road. So anyone in favor, please come forward, give your name and address, and anyone wishing to speak in favor of.
Good evening. I'm Dustin Roberts, 2713 Garden Creek. I wish you would approve this because my driveway currently is very steep. It's hard to get up eight months of the year. My proposed plan would move the driveway to face west so that I can level out the slope quite a bit. Right now, I estimate it may be 20%, 25% slope, steeper in parts, and with four-wheel-drive vehicles, it's even tough to get up that. You saw that light snow the day after. Any light snow like that, it ices and nearly impossible. So I would move that driveway. You can see the snowy hillside in the back. The driveway would face that way after reconstruction, and the slope would level out onto Arts Way, which is the date of this access road. It looks like a pretty even land swap to me. Mr. Bummer, my neighbor actually, is here tonight in favor of it. It would allow large vehicles to get closer to the house. We've embarked on a fire reduction plan from the wildfire team here with the county. We're clearing trees over the next year, and I would appreciate being able to get fire trucks closer to the house if possible. Right now, they can only pull in on the north side of the house, which leaves the entire southern flag exposed.
Any questions for Mr. Roberts? I guess I got -- I have a question for staff. I didn't see any -- anything -- I understand Mr. Bummer's here, but I didn't see anything in writing from Mr. Bummer saying he approves or he's good with this.
It does not look like it was included in your packet. That was part of the form that you gave him, right?
I did, both Mr. Bummer and Elbogan.
There was a form that was submitted, I'm sorry. It must have not made it to your packet by both Mr. Elbogan, who's an adjacent neighbor. He's to the east, and then also Mr. Bummer in this application.
Okay, thank you. So again, any other questions for Mr. Roberts? Jason? You're good. That's right, you can't talk. All right, thank you, Mr. Roberts.
Thank you.
Okay, for the second time, anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the Like somebody had a fight with a bear. Or a few.
Good evening. Brendan Bummer, 3101 Garden Creek Road. And I am in favor of this variance. Obviously, as you've discussed, I'm Dr. Roberts' neighbor. Not only does this help him provide access to his safer and more convenient -- I don't even know if it's convenient, but a much better approach to his house. I think it also alleviates congestion that we find on the main road. So the road, Arts Way, which is the access road, goes past Dr. Roberts' house and continues on up to my house and several other houses. And oftentimes, you know, if they need service, say propane fill, I mean, they've got big trucks and they're blocking the road because there's nowhere else for them to go. They're on the main road, and if we've got to go somewhere, we've got to wait for them to move. So this will alleviate some of that, but I plow the road in the winter often, and I can attest to, you know, the difficulties that we have up there, not just with the main road, but I can't imagine having to try to not only plow, but even attempt to drive up the driveway that he currently has. And this doesn't prohibit or hinder me in any way. In fact, it's beneficial because I will gain a little piece of land right adjacent to my property. The property line's fairly close to my house, and my wife would like a little bit bigger greenhouse. That's like the biggest sunny spot on the property. Anyway, so I'm very much in favor of this. I think it's mutually beneficial, and it doesn't hinder any other aspects of the land or uses.
I should've asked Mr. Roberts when he was up here, but Brendan, maybe you know. The deal that has this concerns the house is to be able to get access to those three garage doors that look like they're sitting up by themselves.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any questions for Mr. Bummer? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, for the third and final time, anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the variance request, please come forward. Seeing none, anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the variance request, please come forward. Second time, anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward. And third time, anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward. Seeing or hearing none, call the public hearing closed. Any discussion? Matt? And I will say it looks like a -- it looks like a mutual beneficial type thing that kind of makes me wonder why it hadn't -- why it's taken until now before it's come before us, but... So Chair would entertain a motion to approve, disapprove, or move -- approve, deny, or table?
So I'd make a recommendation to approve the variance, VC 20-4, to the county commissioners and incorporate all -- by reference, all finds of fact set forth in this staff report, and also recommend just including a signed statement from the other person so that they at least have that in their packet that somebody else has approved it.
Recognizing that there are only three of us up here, and one of them has abstained, I will second the motion as the chair. So, anything else we need to talk about? All in favor of the variance request, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Variance request passes. Okay, so the next two things have to do with the Salt Creek Joint Powers Board, Salt Creek Heights Business Center. First is consideration of ZC 20-3, and that's concerning amending the planned unit development to address the conditional uses for the Salt Creek Heights Business Center, all phases. Trish, do we have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This application was submitted by the Amaco Reuse Agreement Joint Powers Board on behalf of the Salt Creek Heights Business Center to include all phases. As you can see right here, that dark purple is the area that we're talking about. This is phases one through four. And the subdivision is zoned planned unit development. And a planned unit development establishes flexible procedures for land which are planned and developed as a whole. In 2004, the Board of County Commissioners approved the rezoning of the Salt Creek Heights Business Center to planned unit development. The PUD has specific permitted and conditional uses that guide the development in this area. Earlier this year, a building permit was received for a new building that would store and sell hazardous gases and cryogenic liquids. The storage of these chemicals are not permitted or conditional uses within this PUD. The Amaco Reuse Agreement Joint Powers Board has applied to amend their PUD as follows: Chemical storage, warehouse, or other indoor or outdoor storage where prior written consent of BP is provided. where prior written consent of BP is provided with the application for a conditional use. So what they're doing is, is amending their regulations to include this, this use as a conditional use. So it still would have to come before the Planning and Zoning Commission, Board of County Commissioners. They would get BP's approval. So alls we're doing is allowing this as an option within that, that planned unit development. Staff's finding a fact. The proposed amendment addresses the current and anticipated uses for the area specific to Salt Creek Heights Business Center. The application has been signed and agreed to by a majority of the landowners within the subdivision. The amendment does satisfy the planned unit development intent and purpose. As of tonight, there have been no comments received on this application and the Development Department notified all fifteen property owners within the subdivision. And the proposed motion, staff proposes motion and vote by the Planning, Planning Commission to recommend approval by the Board of County Commissioners on this proposed amendment. Staff would also request that you include the findings of fact that were presented in your staff report and this public hearing. And I can answer any of your questions. And the applicant is also here, or the applicant's representative.
Any questions for staff?
So I have a question. So, so the, so the first part of this is to amend the, the PUD. And then the second part of motion is going to be the actual approval for like making a conditional use? Is that, I understand, okay.
Yes. Yep, this is just to allow the use as a conditional use in their regulations.
And so you're just adding that they can store chemicals? Is that, is that what's being added?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I, I also participated in this application, so I will be abstaining from any conversation or voting.
Okay, noted. Trish, I do have a question. So I, I think back on the application we had for gasoline storage and that out in the area of Zero Road and Robertson Road several years ago, where there was the big deal about tanks and access and fire and all that. Has, has, has the county fire department weighed in on this? Is this something that's?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The app, you'll find out in the next, in the conditional use permit that follows this, the application and discussions of this have been sent to both the Nitrana County Fire and the City of Casper Fire Department for their review. So yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions for staff? Thank you, Trish. With that, we'll start the public hearing. All those in favor of application ZC Zone Change twenty dash three for the planned unit development in Salt Creek Heights Business Center, all phases, please come forward. Give your name and address first, please.
Hello, Mr. Chairman. My name's Kyle Ridgeway. I'm with the law firm Williams Porter Danville, address one fifty-nine North Woolcott, Suite four hundred. I'm legal counsel for the AMICO Reuse Agreement Joint Powers Board. And you're correct in characterizing this, that this is a two-step. The first is just to, the first, which is what's in front of the board this evening on the current motion, is related to amending the PUD itself to allow for chemical storage as a potential conditional use. And so, in addition, one of the things we struggled with was planned unit development's kind of a funky thing because it's sort of a hybrid zoning by contract. And, and the actual PUD agreement didn't address explicitly how an amendment was supposed to occur. And so we've tried, I've, I worked with the county attorney Eric Nelson in, in preparing the proposed amendment to the PUD to make sure that we follow this same process going forward in the event that for some future development, we need to amend the PUD again. We know the process we have to follow. And so all we're asking in this particular amendment is to allow for chemical storage in an appropriate conditional use application. So you're, at least on this particular one, you're not considering the actual potential use. That's the next agenda item. It's just in the future, could there be a conditional use for chemical storage? Yes. And then in what circumstances is that? When BP approves it and whatever other terms and conditions related to planning and zoning in authorizing the conditional use would have to be met. And so all we're trying to accomplish here is allowing for that potential conditional use in the future and providing clarity as to how the PUD can be amended in the future. Namely, AMICO Reuse Joint Powers Board has to approve the change. BP has to approve the change. And then we come through you to account, to the county to approve the change. And then that all gets recorded and it formally amends the agreement. And so that took a lot of work from staff and the county attorney's office and myself to sort through this process to get us here. So the AMICO Reuse Joint Powers Board is in favor of the amendment that would allow for this conditional use. It's also in favor of the next agenda item, but I'll deal with that in a minute. This will allow for additional development in the area. The AMICO Reuse Joint Powers Board's mission, intent, and purpose is to develop those lands that were part of the AMICO refinery. And as you know, that's been a heady task over the last twenty years. And so any opportunity they can get like this, they'd love to jump on it that provides development to that area. So unless there's any other questions.
Any questions for Mr. Ridgeway? So same question. I, I did see a letter from the, from BP. But is there a letter from the AMICO Reuse Joint Powers Board?
Is there, do you have the one from Refined Properties in your packet? Refined Properties is the developer hired by the Joint Powers Board.
Okay.
So that, that's effectively the AMICO Reuse Joint Powers Board.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Ridgeway.
Thank you.
For the second time, anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the zoning change, please come forward. And for the third time, anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the zoning change concerning Salt Creek Heights Business Center, please come forward. Okay. Switching horses, all those opposed to the proposed ZC twenty dash three, please come forward. Second time, all those opposed to the proposed zoning change, please come forward. And for the third time, anyone opposed to the zoning change, please come forward. Seeing or hearing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Mitchell, any discussion? So I guess I would have question. So it appears that this has been going on for many months, if not close to a year. Trish, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I think this application, if I remember right, was submitted sometime in June of two thousand and twenty. And so it was just like Mr. Ridgeway said, it was discussions on how to proceed. Do we need all the property owner's signatures? You know, how did, how do we change this? So it wasn't until recently that we all came into agreement that not all property owners have to be part of the application. But as stated, we did get almost every single one. We were missing one. So, but yes, it, it took quite a few months.
And just remembering visiting the site, Air Gas appears to be the vendor that's building on that, on a particular lot that brought all this. Was, I assume that's in getting their building permit, they had to, they were alerted that they needed to jump through these hoops for the conditional use permit?
Correct, yes.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Chair would entertain a motion to approve, disapprove, or table ZO, ZC twenty dash three?
I motion to approve ZC twenty dash three. Approved by the Board of Commissioners. Requested amendment to the planned unit development and to incorporate all findings of facts as set forth herein and make them part thereof.
Just as, as with the previous item on the agenda, the chair noting a lack of quorum. I guess we do have a quorum, but we have, we have a member abstaining. I would second the motion. Any further discussion? All in fig, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. No opposed. The conditional use change is approved. Okay, so the next item also concerning Salt Creek Heights Business Center, conditional use permit twenty dash eight. And that's concerning allowing the storage of chemicals on Salt Creek Heights Business Center Phase Four Lot One. The property's currently addressed as nine eighty-nine Legacy Drive. Staff report, please. Trish?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This application is by the AMICO Reuse Agreement Joint Powers Board, same as our last application. This request and location is in the Salt Creek Heights Business Center. And we're right on the corner of Opportunity Boulevard and Legacy Drive. All the zoning is PUD. So this is facing north on Legacy and running east-west or left to right, right there is Opportunity Boulevard. The subject property is to the right and they have been doing some land reclamation in that area to prepare for the future building. This is looking south down Legacy towards English Avenue. And the subject property is on the left. And here's just looking at the subject parcel. So the conditional use permit criteria, we have the, the showings concerning the following. Will granting the conditional use permit contribute to the overburdening of county services? Proposed finding a fact, there are no county services that are required as part of this conditional use. The application was reviewed by the Nitrana County Fire Protection District and the City of Casper's Fire Department. And this is being reviewed also in great detail as part of the building plans. There's been constant communication between the fire department, Casper Fire, and Nitrana County Fire and our building department in regards to this construction of the building. And that includes all of the elements inside and out for the chemical storage. Will granting the conditional use permit cause undue traffic, parking, population density, or environmental problems? Proposed finding a fact, the application is for the storage of chemicals. The storage of chemicals will not cause undue traffic, parking, or population density. The application has also been reviewed by Wyoming DEQ and BP. Will granting the conditional use permit impair the use of adjacent property or alter the character of the neighborhood? The applicant submitted answers as part of the conditional use permit process. And I have taken out again just portions of their, their statement. So the parcel east of the subject property will remain undeveloped per Phase Four plat. The south and west properties are not developed at this time. Really, the only parcel that's been developed is just north of this and that's the Old Dominions, which you saw in the photo. Granting the conditional use permit for chemical storage will not impair the use of adjacent property or alter the character of their neighborhood. The Salt Creek Heights Business Center is an industrial business park whose primary purpose is manufacturing and storage. Will granting the conditional use permit detrimentally affect the public health, safety, and welfare or nullify the intent of the development plan or the zoning resolution? Part of the application, there was a statement put in there on Air Gas and their facility, how many employees they have, and their main concern being the safety of the, the public and the residents. And they are in business of, they are in the business of safety. Straight from the corporate literature, Air Gas top priority and core value is the safety of our associates, customers, and the communities in which we operate. With a company of this size and having the core values of safety, there should be no question this use will not detrimentally affect the public health, safety, and welfare or nullify the planned use of this industrial park. And this is in reference to the fourteen hundred locations that have over eighteen thousand employees. So that was highlighted in that application. It's pretty significant. Proposed finding a fact, approval of the conditional use permit will not detrimentally affect the public health, safety, and welfare or nullify the intent of the development plan. With an approved conditional use permit, the chemical storage will be compliant with the development plan and the zoning resolution. And as of tonight, we have received no comments on this application. And staff sent public notice to all fifteen property owners within the Salt Creek Heights Business Center. And proposed motion, staff proposes a motion and vote to recommend approval by the Board of County Commissioners of this agenda item and incorporate by reference the findings of fact in the staff report and this public hearing. And I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Trish. Any questions for staff?
I just have a couple on the, so, so I guess on this page, these, these are, these are the chemicals that are going to be stored there?
Correct.
So, and so the, so the fire department looks at this and then make sure that it has the resources to put out whatever, whatever's? And so, so if they wanted to store more, then would they come back here and then request to store more? Is that something that's handled, handled via the, the fire department? Like who, who, like do they? And I guess then the other question is, who's responsible for making sure that they're complying with this? Does the fire department go out there or is that something that's handled, you know, through the, through the planning board? Because, because it does create a little bit of a fire hazard. And I just wonder, you know, we, you kind of approve it, but then who makes, you know, does the, does the fire department go out there and make sure that it's being done safely and stuff?
So the way the application is currently, there are no conditions. If the application is approved with no conditions, then they do not need to come back to us because we have not limited the amount of storage that they can have.
Anyway, because I have about that is if, is that I think the fire department would, would need to have the resources to go out there and put some. I, I think they would want to know if more was being stored, stored than what they could potentially put. I mean, I don't know, I don't know what, what everybody else thinks, but that, that would be the only thing I would see is that I think if they wanted to, to store more, I think there should, they should have to go to the fire department or somebody and figure, and make sure that, that they have the resources to, to control that if it, if it goes. And that would, those would be my only comments on it. I don't know whether that's the responsibility of this, of this commission or whether that's the responsibility of, of somebody else. But, but that, that would be only my thing is making sure that the, the, the resources of the fire department are not going to be overwhelmed by what's being stored out there.
So following up on my question before the previous item and also considering fire, you mentioned that both county and city fire departments are looking at this.
Mm-hmm.
And that previous site from several years ago, out Zero Road, Robertson Road intersection area, the fire department guy was here and he was like, I recall there was concern. So do we have anything? Is there anything yet from the joint city and county to say that this is a, this is a good thing?
I have not received anything from the city. And that's, the discussions that I have seen have been between the building department and Nitrana County Fire and the City of Casper. Sorry, I was just checking to see if there was or not an email in there. I did, I had an email or a discussion with Matt Gakey with the Nitrana County Fire Protection. And he had originally said that he had no concerns with it, that he would be working with the building department on, on making sure all the appropriate spacing and storage were appropriate.
Okay, so I guess another question would be a follow-up. So we got, we got Air Gas here tonight.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, there's many lots out there that can be developed. And are we to understand that every time anyone wants to come out there and put a, a facility in that has combustibles, gasoline, what, they have to come through? Certainly, they go to the county planning, but would they also come to this board and the county commissioners?
As part of the amendment that you approved on the last item, yes. It would be a conditional use permit for the storage of, of chemicals, whether it's indoor or outdoor in this planned unit development.
Okay. I, I'm not sure. Remember, one of the things with the previous application had to do with the volume of combust- the volume of combustibles.
So, yes, Mr. Chairman, that is in regards to our light industrial zoning district. We allow up to 11,999 gallons of flammable or combustible liquids without a conditional use permit. When you hit 12,000 gallons, it requires a conditional use permit. So, that is separate from this planned unit development in the sense that the AMICO Reuse Agreement Joint Powers Board wanted it to be chemicals. So anything chemical-wise, whether it's combustible or, or not, and any size of storage would have to be a conditional use permit. So they're, they're two separate things as far as our zoning resolution goes, but not as far as the storage goes for the chemicals.
Okay. So that $12,000, or 12,000 gallon limit applies here, is that what I hear you saying?
It, it doesn't have any bearing on the, the planned unit development. If they want to store one gallon or 12,000 gallons, it still has to have a conditional use permit within the Salt Creek Heights Business Center.
Okay. That makes sense. Any other questions for Trish? Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we'll move into the public hearing aspect of this application. All those in favor of consideration of conditional use permit 20-8, having to do with Salt Creek Heights Business Center Phase 4 Lot 1, please come forward and provide your name and address, please.
Hello again. Kyle Ridgway, attorney at Williams Porter Day in Neville, LeWu counsel for AMICO Reuse Joint Powers Board. The Joint Powers Board obviously is in favor of the grant of this conditional use permit. And what I want to try to do is answer some of the questions that you had for Trish, or at least frame it, because this is a little bit funky in terms of what a planned unit development is, because it's not something that happens all that often in this county. And this one is really unique because you have the DEQ layer on top. So, the planned unit development is actually an agreement between the county, the Joint Powers Board, and BP, as to what the zoning is in the Salt Creek Heights Business Center. So, what, what we just did with the amendment is allow for chemical storage to be a conditional use in that area. They still have to apply for the conditional use permit, which is what's being done here. And then the conditional use permit basically allows for that area to be zoned for a specific activity. But after you grant a conditional use permit, they still have to go through the process of getting the building permit itself, which is your regulatory layer related to fire, and all of their input on what the structure should look like, where the chemicals should be, how much they can have, those kinds of things. And then the other part of this is, DEQ has to review all of that storage and permit it at the same time. So, that should allay some of your concern with the grant of the conditional use permit here, because all you're really doing with the conditional use permit is saying, the zoning for this particular lot is permitted for the chemical storage. Then they go through the Building Department process in getting a building permit, and they work with DEQ to get the permits that they need to actually store the chemicals on that site, because there are really tight environmental regulations and covenants on those lots as well. So DEQ has heavy involvement in this development. So, that might help clarify some of what you're talking about in terms of where we are in the process. And so, without this zoning change, they can't even go to the building permit part and start construction yet. This is, this is still early, but your concerns get dealt with through the building permit process. And so, for the reasons I kind of discussed last time, the Joint Powers Board's in favor of this, obviously, because they've been trying to develop this area for a really long time. Airgas is a well-respected company that employs a lot of people. It's good for development. It, it meets with all the things the staff's recommending in terms of the purpose and the use for that particular area. And if you have another person come up that wants to do something similar, they still have to go through the process of getting BP's approval, AMICO's approval, and then the conditional use permit before they can even start construction. So, unless anybody has questions, that's AMICO's position.
Mr. Mitchell?
So if I understand what you're saying, so, you know, we grant a conditional use permit, that allows the chemicals to be stored there. And then, so when you build, put a building in, then the building permit, or whoever permits the, the structure, will give you a certain way or amount that you can store in that building, where they have to be stored, and along those lines. And then if you subsequently wanted to, I guess, you know, I guess, and maybe the city attorney could tell you, so, so is that handled by another, another regulatory agency that, to, to make sure that, you know, there's, because my, my only concern is still just making sure that there's a feedback that, that whatever is being stored there, that either the, you know, the, either the permitting, the, the, I guess, the permit, whoever permits the building, you know, that they're coordinating with the Fire Department to make sure that whatever's being stored there, that they, they have sufficient resources to do it. And as long as somebody's doing that, then, then that's my only concern, is, 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 is somebody doing that? And is there some, some way that, that gets addressed? And I don't know if, if anybody has any, knows anything about that, or whether, yeah. That, that is my only thing, is just making sure that whatever's stored there, because it's, it's going to be county fire that, that deals, that, that takes care of it, and just making sure that they can get out and put whatever may, may get started there, that it doesn't exceed their capabilities and, and create major issues.
Well, my, my understanding is that that's where the Fire Department has input, is in reviewing the drawings and in permitting the building and the construction. I know DEQ also has to permit the chemicals, the type, and the amount, and the volume, and those kinds of things. So you've got, you know, at least two layers there. One's environmental, and that's DEQ's role. And then the other's going to be, you know, county fire, city fires' role in the review of the drawings, the planning, and the construction documents for a building permit.
I would anticipate that through DEQ, there's a, there is a periodic reporting requirement that they have that would address Commissioner Mitchell's concern about an excess volume, say, of material?
Yeah, I mean, sorry for interrupting you, Mr. [inaudible].
Sure. That's, we're, we're speaking with you. You're good to go.
They, they have an above-ground storage tank program, where storage tanks that are above ground, or, you know, then there's the below-ground storage tank program. These tanks actually have to get registered with DEQ. And I don't know what all the process is that's involved when the tank becomes registered with that program in terms of inspections and reporting and compliance, but I know there is some. I'm not, I wouldn't hold myself out as an expert in those regulations, but I know for that particular area, DEQ pays quite a bit of attention because there are plenty of environmental covenants there, and there's, you know, ongoing remediation that occurs out there.
Any other questions for Mr. Ridgway? Thank you, sir. Okay, for the second time, anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the conditional use permit application, please come forward.
Evening. I'm Dave Snapp, 3059 Indian Scout Drive here in Casper, 82604. I'm the district manager with Airgas. Been with Airgas for about 17 years. My office right down the street here off the McKinley Street Bridge. And we, so we've operated there since the 80s, I believe. So, so really, this is a relocation from our current facility to, to a new location, provide adequate storage space, safe access for trucks. Our current facility here is, is very difficult to get in and out of.
Excuse me a second. You, you mentioned the existing Airgas. Where is it again?
Yeah. So we're on 430 North McKinley Street.
Okay.
So just a few blocks away here. If you're familiar with the underpass there?
Yes.
It was under the railroad tracks. We're right, right next to that.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. So, we currently have to back semi-trucks across there and stop traffic, which is very hazardous. And we've had near misses, with employees almost being ran over. So we've been working on this project to try to find a suitable site to relocate to for, oh, I've been working on this for about six years.
Wow.
So, so yeah, we request that you, we approve this to, to get, not only just for our safety, but for, for safety of citizens on the road, too. You know, I heard a lot of concern about chemicals. We, we don't store gasoline or flammable liquids. The only storage we have on-site is cryogenic atmospheric gases, so nitrogen, oxygen, argon, which should be listed out. So, you know, even in a case of a release out of a tank, it vaporizes and goes back into there. So that, you know, you have a, may have a local hazard that the Fire Departments are aware of, really from cold or asphyxiation, but you don't have a, a massive explosion hazard.
Okay.
So, we report annually to DEQ, and also at least annually work with the Fire Department for, for inspections, and we invite them in for safety meetings and things as such. So, just wanted to make sure I was here to answer any questions the board may have.
Did I catch your name, Snapp? Is it the?
Snap.
Snap?
Yeah, S-N-A-P-B.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Snapp?
I just have one question. It's just on this page, it just says, storing hydrogen and propane? Because it looks like, is that going to be stored there? Because those are flammable, right?
Yes. So, so, and I should clarify that, we do have flammable cylinders, just not bulk storage tanks. So we have, you know, your, your barbecue-sized propane tanks, and the tanks used in campers. And then you, you have acetylene that are people using in the welding shops around town, and on the, on our welding trucks and such. The volumes of those is significantly smaller than, than our oxygen and nitrogen and stuff. Now, majority of our gas is used as inert gas in welding process, and oxygen for the hospitals here in town, and your home care providers.
Does the Salt Creek Business Height location, is that going to be an enlargement of what you have, or is that about the same size, or?
Um, no, same size. The building itself will be larger, so we have safe storage, you know, better storage for what we do. We've always had enough storage for the cylinder component, but we also supply a large amount of welding hard goods, such as welding rod and wires. And when it's busy here, we've ran out of space. And there's no, there's no way to expand our current facility. We're landlocked.
How long have you been in business in Casper?
Uh, since the 80s, I believe. Airgas purchased Great Plains, or Great Western Airgas, in 94. And I'm, I'm not certain when, when they started, but they've been at that McKinley location as far back as 87 that I'm aware of, if not much earlier.
And I've heard of Airgas. I vaguely knew what they do, but there are numerous other locations in Wyoming, I take it?
Yes. So, we've built a new facility in Gillette in 2002. We have one in Riverton, Evanston, Rock Springs, Cheyenne, also all over other states. So I've been personally involved in building a very similar plant in Billings, Montana, Rapid City, and then currently also because doing a brand-new facility in Missoula, Montana.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else for Mr. Snapp? Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
So, third and last time, anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the conditional use permit, please come forward. Seeing none, okay. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the conditional use permit, please come forward. Second time, anyone in opposition, please come forward. Third time, anyone in opposition? Seeing or hearing none, public hearing is closed. Any discussion?
So while you're discussing, it sounds like the, there is an alternative, somebody follows up on the, on the amount that's stored there, and there's a permitting process. It sounds like that's the case.
It appears so to me as well. Government people crawling all over that site. Jason, did I hear you excuse yourself on this one as well?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. I am abstaining.
Okay, thank you. All right. Is there any other discussion? Chair would entertain a motion to consider?
So, yeah, I'd recommend approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission to forward this to the Board of County Commissioners, CUP 20-8, and to include all statements of fact included that have been set forth and make a part therein.
And for the reasons noted previously on other applications, the last two, the chair would second that motion. Any further discussion? Now for the question. All in favor of conditional use permit 20-8 concerning Salt Creek Business Heights Center, Business Center, Phase 4 Lot 1, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Application passes. All right. Last but not least, in, on the agenda is our public comment. That's a time when citizens may bring forth items of interest or concern that are not on the agenda. So thank you all. Please note that no formal action, they're all gone, so we don't have anything. Forget all that. Anything else we need to be aware of? Trish or Charmaine? Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.